Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for a meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. I hope everyone's healthy and well. We will begin today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Dennis Townsend.
Pleading the nation's flag, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe see it. All right, first item on the agenda today, item number one is Board of Supervisors matters, and I will start with Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pulling this up, go over a few things from last week. This week should be a little bit quieter, but last week we had, there were a couple of good meetings that we had, one in particular that I'd like to highlight. There were two that were similar on forest health. One was our quarterly Yosemite Sequoia Resource Conservation and Development Council meeting last Thursday. There wasn't a whole lot of major changes, just some updates on various projects that we're engaged with. But on Tuesday, the same group hosted a meeting that Supervisor Townsend was able to attend, as well as myself and many others, regarding specifically forest health projects within Tulare County. And there were many players involved with it, including our County Parks Department, Neil Pilliard, Nancy Woods from Resource Management Agency, Denise England, who are Water Resources Director, and also helps out with forest health projects. And then we had a lot of other players. We had the Forest Service, CAL FIRE, some of our Fire Safe Council, local Fire Safe Councils, our Tulare County RCD, which works on SRA areas, state responsibility areas, so Foothill primarily, areas to protect those communities. And we also had some other folks, like American Forestry Association, and folks that have worked with others that have partnerships in our area, like Mule Deer Foundation, Wild Turkey Foundation, that try and, they're very interested in forest health projects, but they have a little bit of a unique perspective because they're coming from the private side. They're coming from the nonprofit side, and so they're more in a support where they don't necessarily own lands, but they're helping with SEQA and NEPA issues, they're helping with financing. So it was a great, it was a great discussion. We talked about some projects, but I think primarily the benefit was, and the key takeaways were, one, we're going to be working on creating a map that all of us can see and show that has all the different programs and all the different agencies, what they're working on, and have one collective map that shows that, so that we can try and really, the premise is to expand what's already happening. So if we see that some people are working in a certain area, and we've got plans to work in the same area or close by in another year or so, then how can we expedite that and make that happen a little bit quicker? So I think that was a big benefit. The other benefit is we kind of committed to meeting on a quarterly basis, the same type of group, so that we would continue the conversation and not necessarily lose momentum on it. And so I think those were, there may be some other things I missed, and I'll look at Supervisor Townsend if I did miss anything. The other item from last week, or other meeting, was the East Quahia Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting. We are continuing to move forward with the Prop 218 process, which will cover a good portion of the, or cover the implementation costs, which are primarily in the first phase of the GSP, is monitoring wells and some other in-stream flow meters, just to kind of, again, get some more information where there's data gaps and figure out where we're at. So it's, it's not necessarily project-specific as far as how we can start getting more water in, it's more just trying to understand our baseline and go from there, although I think there is some benefits to that. There have been some holdups in getting some of the processing done from the, when the state and the feds are required to have some type of approval, but ultimately for the, what that means for the agency is that that's just deferred payments, and for the county it means that there won't be a fourth request for funds this year, that that's going to be delayed till next calendar year. With that, I'll conclude my comments.
All right, thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Shaquelin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just fielding a lot of calls this last couple of weeks regarding COVID. Our grant program, which launched yesterday with the WIB, the $5,000 small business grants that will be, there's a two-week period of application on the tularewib.org website, and then 300 businesses within each district will be receiving grants. So did a lot of that. Had a call last Friday morning with Congressman TJ Cox, just wanted to check in and see how things were going with our COVID response and whatnot, so it was a quick, quick call with him. Couple of Tulare County Economic Development Administration meetings, and then I wanted to, I forgot to say this last time, and I'm glad the sheriff is here, I just wanted to give a shout out to your search team that helped a few weeks ago in a pretty high-profile case down in Ventura County with the drowning of the actress Naya Rivera, sent a team down and got a lot of, a lot of press, highlighted an unfortunate situation, but it's good that we have that team accessible not only for us, but, but other agencies. And then I just wanted to mention to Aaron, you might want to, you're not distancing there with your cardboard cutout.
All right. Supervisor Valero.
All right. Good morning, Tulare County. This past weekend, we lost a great community leader in the community of Goshen, Graciela Martinez. But she wasn't just an advocate for Goshen, she was a promoter for and of the entire Central Valley. When I was elected to county supervisor last year, Graciela was the first person to reach out to me to schedule a meeting. This was my first meeting ever in my new role. Little did I know she had already organized the business community to meet with me. We all sat around the table to discuss challenges facing the Goshen community. Because of people like Graciela, Goshen is becoming a vibrant place and a space for the residents who live there. I will always remember Graciela leading the charge wherever she went and whatever she put her heart work to. With her passing and Isabelle's recently, I feel like it's a hard hit for community advocates. I hope everyone carries on with more dedication than ever before. Then last Tuesday, I had the opportunity to talk with the Ivanhoe Town Council over Zoom. We continued to highlight the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and concerns impacting this community, and we eagerly await some of the projects scheduled for this area. Last Friday, I participated in the food distribution for Monson Saltona. We continued to see a great demand for this, and I am so appreciative of all of the support and outreach that organizations like Food Link, Seven Oaks Church, LULAC, and USDA provide. That same day, I was on a news briefing panel titled "Distance Learning for K through 12: Can It Be Done with Equity for All Kids?" The panel included Dr. Pedro Noguera, the Dean of the School of Education at the University of Southern California, also included Sean Harper, Executive Director at the USC Race and Equity Center, and the Executive Director of School Superintendent's Association. We had a great conversation about equity, creative means, and the barriers to effectiveness in education. And as you know, the 2020 census is ever more pressing and important during these times. And now that data collection will conclude by the end of September, though it was previously stated to be the end of October, we really need to make sure our communities are counted. Tulare County typically has an undercount, and we need to make sure we get closer to the actual for the people that we serve. I'm also looking forward to tomorrow's Seville Water Campaign. We will be sharing with the community the importance of clean, safe drinking water now that Phase 1 has been completed. We want to encourage our residents and let them know that, yes, this project is complete, and yes, people can feel certain that the county is here to support them on their journey. We will have representatives from the State Water Board, we will also have Senator Hurtado present at that event tomorrow, as well as the county and the county working diligently on this project. And we will be practicing social distancing and mask-wearing. And then we have officially started Fun Under the Sun in District 4, and that's a series of programs and activities for students in District 4. And so our first challenge this week is to do a TikTok or video challenge, either dance, comedy, or DIY videos to engage our youth, especially during this time. And so just looking forward to all of the work that we're doing to continue our COVID-19 measures, and looking forward to our agency director, Tim Lutz's, report this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
He better do that TikTok video before the president bans it, so get on it.
All right, Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. Wednesday, the 22nd, we had our space planning ad hoc along with Chair Vanderpool, just talking about all of the, all of the things that are on board for the county, for county facilities, some of the things that are obviously being delayed, and then some restrategizing, how to handle things like energy and ADA upgrades. We did talk about the Porterville, the Cornerstone project there for the DA and public defender, and that's coming along. I noticed I drove by just the other day and saw the Cal Bennett Furniture vans out there, so the furniture's being loaded into the space as we speak. We talked about the status of the probation at the old Kmart building, the main jail, the program facility, and quite a bit of discussion about the Tulare Acres facility in the changing times of what to, how to handle the leasing of that facility. And then on the 24th, I had a real interesting tour of the Seton Pistachio Plant in Terabella, went through the, really the whole facility, kind of from top to bottom, to see all of the different upgrades that have been happening lately since the last time I was out there, which has been probably a year and a half ago. And quite a bit's been done, but one of the things that was really exciting was to see the research and development department that they have, a small, small building with just a lot of things going on, being manufactured, coming up with new ideas for way to process. But also across the street is an older building in town there in Terabella that's going to be developed into a training facility on, specifically on robotics. And they're, they're building some of their own robotics now, but what they'd like to do is to bring some of the local youth there and give them an opportunity to see some things in the robotics field, be able to do some programming, actually some construction, and learn how to use those. So it could be some real life-changing opportunities for some of the, some of the young folks out in, in the Terabella area. And then on the, on the 28th, the new unit chief, the new Tulare Unit Chief for CAL FIRE, Jesse Estrada, came over and we had a visit in Porterville, and just to catch up on what's happening with CAL FIRE, how we're partnering with them, especially on forest management issues. And then we took the opportunity to go out and look at the, the Joint Air Attack Base in Porterville, at the Porterville Airport. I didn't realize it was only one of two in California Joint Air Attack bases, so it has CAL FIRE, United States Forest Service, and the Bureau of Land Management all combining out there. So had a great time getting to meet some of the pilots, some of the people that are on standby out there, looking at the, at the planes that they use to fight the fires, the initial attack on, on the fires that we have around. I'm sure they're busy. I know they're busy. They had a couple of planes on the ground, but I know they had several that were already out and about, so great, great group out there. And then as Supervisor Crocker mentioned, the Tulare County Forest Project's call, that really he had set up and made all the calls to get these different organizations together, so thank you Supervisor Crocker for letting me know about that. It was a really interesting call. He had mentioned, but I think it's really important that, you know, putting together maps or finding existing maps of the projects that are going on, that are being able to be updated, so that all of the different organizations that are involved, whether they're governmental organizations, nonprofit organizations, private entities that want to be involved in it, can come together and say, okay, here's where we have projects, here's who's going after grants, and then combine those together so that we're not overlapping in any of our, any of our efforts, and that we can partner together better. So I thought that was great, and also preparing a spreadsheet of the different projects going on, and just the continued correspondence. We've already had follow-up emails with some surveys of what projects we have going on. So I think that's going to be a really great group, being able to get together. And then also that same day, the sheriff invited us out to help with the food distribution at Strathmore Middle School, and thank you Sheriff for the invitation, that was a great event. It was to go from 5:00 to 7:00. I think I got out there about 10 minutes after 5:00, and the line of cars was literally around the school block, which is a pretty big block. And so I, I had turned off and had to drive all the way around to try to figure out how to get back onto the site through the line of cars. I think there were 750 boxes of food. There were, there were actually more cars than that that showed up. One of the deputies, or one of the explorers, I can't remember, ran out to tell, to have to cut the line off and say, we're going to run out, but it went very quickly. The food was all gone before, before the 7 o'clock closing time, and really had a great group of explorers and, and some deputies out there helping, as well as the sheriff himself. And so had a good time, the people were very, very appreciative of the boxes that were being handed out, sponsored by Sheriff's Department, USDA, Seven Oaks Church, great event. And I know it was just one of, one of many. I had participated in one earlier with California Farm Workers Association in Rich Grove, and it was sort of the same experience, that handed out all the boxes pretty quickly. Thursday, had a Zoom meeting, and thanks to Mike Washam and Aaron Bach for setting it up through RMA with Eight Minute Energy, solar company that's, that's coming in and doing a lot of large projects in the area, and got to meet them via Zoom and talk specifically about the Rexford project that's going to be happening out in Dukor, kind of 2021, '22 and beyond, developing that, and looking about 700 megawatts of power out there. So very, 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 very big project that's going to be happening, pretty exciting with all the jobs that will be created from it and as spinoffs from that. And on Friday, went out to the EDC office in Exeter, Tulare County Economic Development Corporation office in, in Exeter, and had a teleconference with some of the board members there, mostly discussing what kind of projects that they could be working on and we could be helping with in the, in the southeastern Tulare County, Porterville area especially, and they had a few projects that are really exciting that they're looking at, that could provide a real framework for some development over in that area. So I know that we're, they're working around the county, but we specifically were, were targeting on things that were over in District 5. And then also that Friday, had a foundation meeting with the Sierra View Foundation, which raises money for Sierra View Medical Center, and we were talking about fundraisers because that's a hot topic right now, without being able to do the ones that we normally do, which are large gatherings. So what we were going to be doing and the options, and we had a lot of good discussion about that. And also, just a kind of a shout out to them about the development of the CAF Lab in Porterville. It's happened, it's been, it's been up for a little bit now, but they're just starting to do some procedures, getting new licenses for new procedures over there, so it's a, it's a great asset for Sierra View and for the Porterville area in general, for the, the new CAF Lab. And then a lot of talk about the small business grants that just went live, the applications just went live, and so been fielding a lot of calls, a lot of emails and texts about that, quite a bit of buzz going on, so we're hoping that we can provide a lot of help to the small businesses that have been hurt by these, by the shutdowns. Tomorrow, we have our Local Area Formation Commission meeting, and then Thursday, the Eastern Two League Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting over in Porterville, and that's about it.
All right. Last but not least, just a few things that I wanted to cover today's meeting. I had, last week, had the opportunity to take my family on a little getaway, it was very nice, but definitely felt the effects of COVID and the impact it's having on tourism and recreation in different communities throughout the state, but it was a great time with my family. I meet this week the new superintendent of Early Mart, Jaime Robles. I am familiar with him a little bit from my high school days in Tulare, but he is now superintendent in the community of Early Mart, and as most of my colleagues know, and probably the vast majority of members of the audience know, how important and integral schools are in our unincorporated communities, and how they often serve as the hub of the community, and the superintendent is such an important part of the school and the presence that the school has in the community, and how involved the school can be in facilitating community advancement and gatherings, et cetera. So look forward to meeting with him, and I think he can have a tremendous impact in Early Mart. I do have a LAFCO meeting this Wednesday, right here in these chambers, at 2:00 PM, like Supervisor Townsend mentioned. And then on Monday, at 1:00 in Farmersville, Monday is August 10th, there will be a meeting of the Greater Quahia Groundwater Sustainability Agency, as we continue to look towards implementation of our plan. Should be interesting to see how that goes. That's all that I wanted to highlight for today's board meeting, we'll bring it back to the agenda and take up item two, which is a request to recognize Dave Bryant upon his retirement from the Resource Management Agency. Now, will the real Dave Bryant please stand up? I see a fake one here, and I want to congratulate him for his 34 years, and like to call forward at this time, Resource Management Agency Director Reed Shanky to kick this presentation off.
Good morning, members of the board. Mr. CAO, County Counsel Reed Shanky with the Resource Management Agency. Wanted to just say thank you for letting us take an opportunity or a moment of your time here to recognize Dave. During these COVID times, we're not able to have a big party or a bash for him, so I thought it was real important that we did take a moment to recognize him here. Real briefly, wanted to touch on a little bit of his history with the county here. Dave Bryant was born right here in the Central Valley, born in Fresno, moved to Davis, then Lindsay. His family then moved to the city of Rockland, where he was a standout sprinter at Sierra College. Hanging up the cleats, Dave had attended a bachelor, attained a Bachelor's of Science degree in City and Regional Planning at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, and then a Master's degree in Public Administration from CSU Stanislaus. After grad school, he started his career working for Slocog in 1983. After three years in San Luis Obispo, he made the wise choice to come back to Tulare County and join us here in the county. He did that in 1986, so quick math, that's almost 34 years with the county, so long time service, so very, very important time. Dave started in the county's Transportation Department and then moved over to the Planning Department, where he advanced to a Planner 4 in charge of long-range, long-range planning in 1998. He moved to the CAO's office briefly in 2002, where he worked as Deputy CAO for three years before coming back to RMA. So once again, a good choice there. He was promoted to Chief Planner over Special Projects in 2015. Dave met his wife Lisa at Cal Poly and is the proud father of two, Fred and Joanne. He coached his son and daughter's local soccer teams and saw them through college at Cal Poly Pomona and San Diego State, all well-styled, performing his duties here at the county. Over the last five years, because of Dave Bryant's commitment and perseverance, RMA has developed 35 community plans and is currently in the process of updating the general plan's transportation element and water element. As a true baseball fan, in his words, these are infield doubles, which for the rest of us, I had to look it up, it's something rare and almost impossible to achieve, so well done for that, Dave. At RMA, Dave's legacy will be in the completion of the county's general plan update in 2012, the Three Rivers Community Plan, the incorporation of the Framework Plan through MOUs that exist with all the cities within Tulare County, through the breadth and depth of the general plan policies and the rezoning of all the communities that Dave has meticulously pored over day and night. Through his work, Dave has truly touched the lives of many throughout Tulare County, truly, truly have. Dave's colleagues say he exemplifies the truest meaning of an Eagle Scout, and we are all proud to have worked with him. As a true Planner's Planner, the county could not have progressed so much without him. So on behalf of all of us at RMA, some of us are here, many more are back in the office, both past and present, we'd like to congratulate Dave and his family on his retirement, and we wish him the best in his future endeavors. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Reed. Come on up here, Dave.
On that side.
First of all, I want to add something. I, I received a, a letter this morning from somebody. It says, "Greetings from Walla Walla, Washington." Although I am not able to congratulate him in person today, I want to tell Dave that you'll always be remembered for your hard work and dedication to serving the people at Tulare County throughout the years. Thank you for your commitment to the RMA team and willingness to mentor new employees. Cherish your family, delight in coastal living, cheer on the Dodgers and Lakers, and enjoy your retirement. Your friend and colleague, Michael Washam. So, as he said, you're very important, but not important enough to come back from vacation. But, so I just want to present you with the county seal and congratulate you on your retirement. Thank you very much for your 34 years, almost 34 years of service to Tulare County. I'm sure you've seen a lot of growth and change throughout those years, and according to Reed, you'll be very missed, so congratulations. And you want to, you can come around here for a, a pic, right, Sam? You want anybody else in it, Reed? Come on in. I didn't, no, no, not the Dodger thing. So if we can, we'll take one with, and then we can just slide our masks down for just a moment and smile. All right. Congratulations. There you go. And I think Reed has a few more things, and then some comments by Dave.
Yes, yeah, so Aaron has actually worked most closely with Dave, so we're gonna have to let him.
Yeah, so on behalf of the rest of the staff and from your boss, we'd like to give you the opportunity to be at the Dodgers games this year. It's the only chance you'll ever have to have a season ticket, so unfortunately, the poster of you. And I gave you all my swag in my office for Cal Poly, so thank you. And this is a letter from all the staff to you, and this is an actual key chain, key ring bottle opener from the World Series with the Dodgers, from Celeste to you. So, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, now we will have, as soon as Dave sets all his gifts down, Dave can come forward and make some comments, and then I'll bring it back to the board to make a few comments.
Thank you, Chairman Vanderpool, members of the board, Dr. Britt, Ms. Peterson, County Counsel. I want to express my sincere appreciation for your inviting me here this morning and for your recognition. I really appreciate the opportunity to be recognized this morning. Today, as Reed mentioned, I have my wife Lisa and daughter Joanne with me. My son Fred is working in San Francisco and was not able to make it this morning. There is a story behind the There is a story behind the cutout. The Tulare County General Plan was first adopted by the board in 1964. About that time, I was a kid, growing up in Lindsay, and in 1965, I bet my third-grade teacher, Vivian Sandberg, that the Dodgers would beat the Twins in the World Series that year. So we bet a nickel, and she paid. And so from that time forward, I was definitely a true Blue Dodger fan. That has stuck with me to this day. But during that time, as a kid, again, growing up in Lindsay, if someone came up to the Washington School Playground and said, "Someday, you will be involved in the Tulare County General Plan," I would have looked at them and say, "You've got the wrong guy." Say, "Quit bugging me, and let me get back to my baseball game." But somehow, I made it over to Cal Poly, and as Reed mentioned, got a degree in city planning, became a city planner. At one of my first meetings, community meetings that I went to in Tulare County, an older gentleman came up to me, and he looked me in the eye, and he said, "Son," he said, "Are you from around these parts?" And so I looked him back in the eye, and I said, "Well, I spent some time growing up in Lindsay as a kid, and my dad was the FFA teacher at Lindsay High School, and my mom taught third grade at Jefferson School." And he smiled, and we got off on the right foot that night, and things took off from there. I think when he took one look at me, I looked like a kid just fresh off of a college campus, probably a little wet behind the ears, who looked like he might need a map and a compass to find his way back to Visalia that night. But many times in going out to community meetings over the years, I would get back late, and my wife would ask me, "How was the meeting tonight?" And I would usually have a typical phrase. We would be prepared with all of our charts and graphs and figures, and land use and zoning maps, and transportation and circulation plans, complete streets plans, and before the meeting would even start, someone would come up to me and say, "What are you going to do about that cow in my neighbor's yard?" But typically, after the meeting, that same person would come up to me and say, "You know, we really appreciate you caring for our community and coming out tonight. Thank you so very much." And that always really touched my heart. It made the drive home a lot faster, and I would like to recognize each and every one of you in that regard. Thank you for making those trips out with us those evenings. We always appreciated your support of our projects, and we're very thankful to have you there, standing beside us when we made those presentations to the community. In closing, I was sitting in on an interview recently, and one of the candidates said, "What makes you come to work every day?" And I had heard things over the years, "What do you like about your job?" But this one was really more direct and to the point, so I thought for a minute, and I said, "It's the opportunity to provide a positive impact on the life of the residents that we serve." And it really is truly an honor and a privilege to be able to give back to the community. Growing up in Lindsay as a kid, and all of the people that helped me along my way, and to be able to give back to those people and to the community at large is really, truly a blessing, and I'm so very grateful to have been a part of that. But my accomplishments really is a collective effort, your board, the Planning Commission, LAFCO, TCAG, the hard work and dedication of the people in RMA and the other county departments, as directed by your board, working hard every day to provide that, those positive benefits to the residents of Tulare County. So with that, again, thank you so very much today, and God bless your continued work as you provide, continue to provide outstanding service to the residents of Tulare County.
I'll bring it back to the board to make some comments at this time. Supervisor Valero.
All right. Well, Dave, I want to thank you so much for your hard work here in Tulare County. You are the embodiment of dream big, work hard, and giving back, especially in Tulare County, and also for your commitment and your work to be in the trenches. I know that there are many nights where you had to be away from family in order to be entrenched in these communities throughout, and so thank you for giving of your time, and then also for shedding light on even the most vulnerable communities, because they rely on your plans in order to keep our communities moving forward. So thank you so much.
All right. Supervisor Crocker.
Dave, I knew I always liked you, and today I learned even more reasons why. Lindsay, Lakers, and Dodgers, I mean, that's a trifecta right there, put in a horse reference. I just really appreciate so much your demeanor and how you've handled it. I mean, we know that Three Rivers isn't always the most easy community, and there were lots and lots and lots of meetings there, probably more so than any other community, and you always took that very well, and I couldn't agree more. People, even though there was something that they were adamantly opposed to or had significant issues with, they always respected you. And you make, you and so many others make this county such a great place, because of the respect you've shown to others in the community despite the differences, you know, taking it like a champ, and just, and always having your facts, always having everything. You knew the document in and out, and that takes a special individual to be able to know the ins and outs, all these various plans, that for most of us is not easy reading, to say the least. So I just really appreciate your dedication, and I wish you all the best in retirement.
Thank you.
Supervisor Townsend.
Well, Dave, obviously, compared to your years of service, all of us up here are relative newcomers to county life, so that is truly a lifetime of service. You go 34 years, and probably seemed even longer since you were working on things like general plans, right? But no, we really appreciate all you've done and everything that you stand for, and hope that you really enjoy your retirement with your family, and I just have to say, go Mustangs.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, so a few comments that I want to make. You know, as being on the board supervisors for now my 12th year, I remember the very first time I even met Dave Bryant, it was actually in a closed session. We were talking about the general plan, and normally, everything's set in closed session and is kept in closed session, but since Steve Wardley is not here anymore, I will go ahead and just make one comment. I remember Steve looking over to Henry, then Director of Resource Management Agency, and asking, "Who's that kid? Who is that kid that's in here giving us guidance and advice on the general plan? Oh, that's Dave Bryant." And I remember that sticking vividly in my mind, because you have always been wet behind the ears, so to speak, and very difficult to gauge your age. You look very young even still, Dave, and I hope that that youth continues into your future. I know it will. But just even in your comments here today, I can tell how heartfelt and dedicated you were to the job that you did. You really took great pride, and you had a passion and love for making a difference in the community. And 35 community plan updates, the general plan, what an impressive resume and track record you have in Tulare County and in RMA, and it's because you loved what you did, and you were dedicated to making these communities, at least on paper, have the ability to see the future they were walking into. And so I appreciate the work that you put in, and I appreciate your dedication, and your passion and love for the job is definitely going to be missed, but I do hope that you have trained your replacement well, and that we will be looking forward to the same dedication as we move on as a county. But you have left a definite mark here. I appreciate your work, and I wish you the best in retirement. And I do have to say, working here for 34 years is pretty darn incredible. You've been working in your work career longer than I've been alive, so I just want to make that point, too. So thank you, Dave. I appreciate it, and all the best in your retirement.
Yes, thank you so very much.
Take care. Okay, we are now going to move on to item three, which is a request to present a proclamation proclaiming August 2020 as Child Support Awareness Month. I am going to now call forward Department of Child Support Services Director Roger Dixon, and I will read the proclamation and present down there, unless you want to make a few comments real quick. Roger, I'll give you the chance.
Good morning, board, Mr. Britt, council. I too also want to thank the board for continuous support of the department, and the proclamation being read today, and continue to offer the citizens of Tulare opportunity to understand and to really get a good feel about our program and what services that we provide. Unfortunately, this year, our events have dramatically shut down, so we're not as aggressive getting our information out. We're going to be doing a lot of social media types of things this year, so, but I just wanted to say thank you for your support, and really appreciate it. Thank you. Also, I have Laura Hernandez here, who has been working as an interim community liaison, who coordinates a lot of our efforts in our outreach efforts and getting to the community. And she's done a great job, and I wanted her to be a part of this today, as she's finishing up her interim position this month, so.
All right, so I am proud to be here today, reading this proclamation, and Sam, my mask is in my pocket, and I'll put it on as soon as I'm done reading, because it muffles how I speak. This proclamation is from the Board of Supervisors, recognizing August 2020 as Child Support Awareness Month in Tulare County. Whereas August 2020 has been selected as Child Support Awareness Month in the state of California, and whereas the vision of the Tulare County Department of Child Support Services is to educate and empower families with the knowledge and resources to promote the well-being of children, and whereas the mission of the Tulare County Department of Child Support Services is to enrich our community by partnering with parents to obtain accurate child support orders to assist families in meeting medical and financial needs, and whereas more than 22,800 children benefit each year from services provided by the Tulare County Department of Child Support Services, with approximately $40 million paid in child support expected to be collected and distributed in the federal fiscal year ending September 30th, 2020. And whereas enabling children to grow up in a healthy environment where they receive the financial, medical, and emotional support they need from both parents is among the department's highest priorities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize August 2020 as Child Support Awareness Month in Tulare County, and wishes to thank the Department of Child Support Services for their tireless work to help improve and promote the well-being of the children in Tulare County. Signed by Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Shucklian, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend. And I have to tell you, Roger, now more than ever, it is critical to be an advocate for children in today's society, and I appreciate the work that you do. I appreciate the work that is done by all the dedicated employees in your department. Every children needs, I'm sorry, every child needs an advocate, and the work that you do is so appreciated. So thank you, and please do pass on our congrats and our recognition to your department during this month, even though the recognition looks a lot different than it has in the past. We'll miss the Rawhide Ballgame and all the other things that you do to spread the awareness and make sure that the community is aware of how important child support is for the children of Tulare County. So thank you, Roger, and I will call you forward. And Laura, if you want to come up to receive the proclamation, that would be great.
Mask on real quick. Yeah, we have to make sure that we're coming through.
All right, we are one on three.
I'm smiling under the mask.
It really, yeah, block your face there. One, two, three, one more, one, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations. Laura, thank you.
Next, we are going to move on and take up item four, which is a request to receive an update from the Health and Human Services Agency on COVID-19 status and response efforts in Tulare County. Director Lutz.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CEO and council. I'm Tim Lutz, Health and Human Services Agency Director. Have quite a bit to report on today. I'll try and move through quickly, but as always, please feel free to stop if you have questions or I'm going too fast. I also have a couple slides that I was going to share as I'm going along, just to highlight some of the key points. So the last two weeks, again, with the dark day last week, this report reflects two weeks of activity. Unfortunately, over those last two weeks, we saw the largest week-over-week increases that we've seen with COVID. Case levels, as of this morning, are at 9,990 COVID-positive individuals. So from my last report, we've added 2,870 cases, which is a 40% increase. We also are at 193 deaths, which is 25 deaths over my report two weeks ago. Our current recovery number, 6,850. So looking here at the first graph up on the screen, it's showing what our weekly totals for cases. You can see on July 27th, the week ended, had the highest we'd seen, 1,638. It's a 71% increase over the prior week, and 44.1% higher than our previous weekly high number. Last week added an additional 1,211 cases, which is a decrease of 26% from the prior week, but still our second-highest weekly number. Unfortunately, also, we learned late last night through the state, and that's also going to be discussed on today's media update, that there's an error with the state system, so some cases did not come through over the last week at least. So unfortunately, some of these numbers are probably understated at this point, as opposed to overstated. So I would expect a reconciliation once the state rectifies the problem. It sounds like it's impacting every county, and again, it's going to be the focus with Dr. Golly, the Health and Human Services Director for the state's press conference this afternoon at noon. The other indicator that we look at are case rate over the last 14 days. You'll recall, at my prior report, we were, we had kind of leveled off. However, over the last two weeks, we saw that increase significantly, almost 51%, and went from 393 per 100,000 to 593.5 per 100,000. And again, based on the state's information, that there's a error in the system, that number might actually be higher. And then for positivity rate, this is a new graph that I had asked staff to try and pull together, and try and show our positivity rate based on the number of tests that we're doing, with the goal of one showing kind of where our testing volume has been over the course of the pandemic. You can see those are tests per day, and you can see where we started to, where we're averaging on our tests per day, in 1,500 to 1,600 tests per day. It also will show you with the line graph where the positivity number has been on those tests. And what I think this graph, in addition to showing kind of our increase in testing not just the number of tests that we're doing. So, our testing positivity moved from 11.3% on my last report to the July 19th to 25th, seven-day lagged positivity is at 16.7%. Our July 26th to August 1st non-lagged, which is then our estimated positivity, is 13.9%. Again, it'll be... Normally, I would be saying it would go down, knowing that the state has issues on positive cases that are coming to counties. We might actually see that dip up, which would be different from what we'd normally been looking at and reporting for those lagged positivity numbers. So, we'll just have to wait to see when they rectify the issue and what that looks like for us. And then the R-effective for the county as of August 1st, we did show an increase going from 1.07 to 1.13. You can see here of a chart of neighboring counties as well and their respective R-effective numbers. So, what the trending is clearly showing is sharp increases, increase in cases for the county. All of the indicators over the last two weeks have moved in the wrong direction. Also, is not coincidental that a lot of those increases occur within the window of 4th of July celebrations, get-togethers, and other types of activities. Our contact investigations have shown a large group of recent cases that are from gatherings, and we're seeing from protests to small backyard barbecues and everything in between in terms of what those gatherings look like. The other area that we continue to monitor closely are hospitalizations. Those showed a 20.2% increase over the last two weeks, going from 84 to 101 hospitalized COVID-19 patients. Briefly, then, testing, that continues to be a significant challenge at the state level. We are... Public health is currently implementing and working with providers on the updated guidelines from the state's Testing Task Force, which really goes back toward giving that prioritization toward key individuals and symptomatic individuals. That being said, also recognizing that test, you know, we do have a situation where testing demand exceeds supply. There are still some major pockets within the county that need enhanced testing, regardless of whether they cleanly meet those criteria outlined by the state guidelines. Our hope is, as we engage with the state's UST or the Unified Support Team, that we start to address some solutions to being able to expand testing despite the constraints with commercial labs. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the options we're looking at when we get into some of our enhanced testing and surveillance within our communities in a little bit. So, the biggest activity over the last couple weeks on the state's side, first Unified Support Team or UST is... was announced last week, and that's targeted for eight Central Valley counties, and really acknowledging the significant factors that are impacting the Central Valley with COVID-19, and, you know, fortunately recognizing some of the unique challenges with the valley and our workforce population and essential workers. The UST will implement a multidisciplinary approach that was modeled first in Imperial County and then built upon by the state. Cal OES is the lead for the team. However, it does include resources from California Department of Public Health, Emergency Medical Services Authority, Department of Social Services, Cal OSHA, Business Consumer Services, Housing, and Department of Food and Ag. The goals for the UST broadly speaking would be augmenting public health, staff in epidemiology, data management, disease investigation and contact tracing, assisting with outbreak management in workplaces and congregate settings, supporting our healthcare facilities in the industry, deploying available personnel from federal and other state resources, augmenting the hospital and ICU bed capacities, and also contracting for additional capacity should the need arise for surge, again, additional alternative care sites. The county, we're currently in the early stage of planning for the UST site visit. This afternoon, we have a call with the designated lead from CDPH to kind of work out some of the details and the when for the site visit. The important piece with that site visit is we're making sure to include representatives from a wide range of county departments and also from the cities, business community, and nonprofit community-based representatives. The ultimate plan with those site visits is to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment of the county and identify some of the key challenges we're facing and ways that the state resources can help augment our response.
Tim, would that be similar to what happened in Fresno yesterday?
Yes. The process, it's been rolling across, I think... I know Fresno had their meeting, and I want to say San Joaquin might have had their meeting or have it scheduled possibly today. And then I think Kearns is scheduled. So, all of those eight counties are having their individual meetings that are all structured a little differently based on the needs of that community. So, then the other big item last night late, the state did finally release the schools' waiver criteria that we've been promised and waiting for, for two weeks at this point. The elementary school waivers do apply for TK through sixth grade only, and then there are a number of key areas that local public health officer must review and take into consideration when granting the waivers. The first and most important for our discussion element to this is that the state is advising that any county with a case rate over 200 per 100,000 people should not be granting in-person waivers. Going back to where we are at our 593, that clearly puts us at a significant gap between what the state's...
Quick question. I know that there's that significant gap, but what I read in the waiver language was double the rate of 200 per...
The 200, it's double. The 100 is kind of the threshold for what they're looking for.
Okay. So, the 200 is doubled.
So, the 200 is doubled there.
So, that's the max then.
Yeah. So, what they're saying is 100 is that threshold for you're on the monitoring list, but they're doubling that and saying the 200 would be the range that they'd be consider acceptable for granting those waivers. Additionally, when approving those plans, and the state released three separate guidance documents on this, one of which is a... is really a form or a checklist that local schools must identify and address and submit those to the health officer, which then also goes to the state. It must take into consideration health and safety, looking at local and state health guidance and adherence to mandatory requirements, safety plans and available PPE for school personnel, availability of public health and school resources for the investigation and contact tracing response. Obviously, the local epidemiological data and healthcare capacity needs to be taken into account, such as the aforementioned case rate, testing positivity trends, and other key indicators of disease management, transmission, and the healthcare impact. And then any additional local factors that might be considered relevant. Testing's an important one, and they're looking at availability of testing resources to provide access to periodic testing for all elementary school teachers and staff with reasonable turnaround times on those tests. And then also, other considerations is demonstration that the school, the district, or system of private schools has consulted with labor, community, and parent organizations on the face-to-face instruction plan and waiver. So, really then, once the superintendent or equivalent were to submit those plans, they're also required to then post those to the school's website for public dissemination and review and comment, and then addressing all of those key areas. They have a checklist of about 10 to 14 items that schools must address along those areas that I just highlighted. So, now that those waiver criteria have been issued, and again, recognizing where our case rate is, but where we're hoping our case rate's going to be, we want to make sure that we're trying to get ahead of this as much as possible and plan. We have a team in place within Health and Human Services that is going to be dedicated to receiving these waivers, working with the schools. We intend to review the requests on a case-by-case basis, factoring in local conditions, and then discussing any plan modifications or concerns with the districts. Obviously, and again, the disclaimer, we're keenly aware with the late timing of this, schools are starting as early as this week in some areas and rolling out through August. So, recognizing that we're wanting to make sure our team is mobilized and being responsive, but also knowing where our case rates are today, but we want to make sure that we're planning for the future, and also recognizing that a school, based on what the state's guidance is indicating, that applications and all supporting documents must be submitted to the health officer at least 14 days prior to the desired opening date. That's coming from the state's guidance in terms of school opening. So, I... And I say that because regardless of whether we received it tomorrow and were to be able to go through all of that, the 14-day window would still be in play, as would our case rate.
Tim, real quick, would you suggest that schools actually submit a waiver request now with their plan in anticipation of more stable or decreased case rates, so that when those rates do get to that point, they have a plan that's been submitted, they won't have to wait that 14 days possibly if you have reviewed and certified their plan here locally, so that they can at least be a little bit closer towards the actual opening?
And that, I think, is the intended goal of discussing that, is absolutely... I know Dr. Hutt is keenly aware and concerned about schools doing a lot of work, given where our case rates are. We know that even when we're at that 200, we're still going to be on the monitoring list, and that's going to be some time out. The more work we can do now, the better, so that schools are prepared as soon as they can.
Thank you.
And then, lastly, in addition to the school waivers, youth sports also finally was issued yesterday for the guidance. What the guidance specifies is that sports cannot be conducted... or a sport that cannot be conducted with sufficient distancing or cohorting, that only then physical conditioning and training is permitted, and only still when physical distancing can be maintained for that training and conditioning. An additional stipulation there is that the training and conditioning should take place outside, and indoor condition and training would only be allowable in counties where gyms and fitness centers are allowed to operate indoors. So, that does create quite a few barriers in terms of what those... what youth sports would be allowable. Any activities that include assemblies or close contacts, such as tournaments, events, competitions, also would not be allowed. And the idea there is, even if the players are there, typically those are attended by family or a different team that hasn't been in regular contact or co-horted with the other team. Given that we finally got that guidance, we've had a draft press release ready to go. We're looking at where the questions are with the state document, and we'll be issuing that today sometime clarifying the sport guidance. At this time also, adult amateur team sports are not permitted. The state has indicated that guidance for amateur adult sports would be forthcoming. So, then moving quickly through just some activity summaries, Porterville Adult, I always do that, every single time. Eventually, I'm going to not say that. Porterville Alternative Care Site has a current census of 15, so down over the last couple weeks. Total patients that have gone through PACs is 58. And then on our remdesivir, last week, Quiadelta Sierra View received a combined 175 vials. This week, we're anticipating 277 vials, and now those allocations are coming weekly as opposed to the bi-weekly prior schedule, which has been very helpful. Then on our industry and community liaison teams, on our complaints for non-compliant businesses, we've since 5/21, we've received 207 complaints. Of those, the vast majority, we make contact, offer guidance, suggestions. The businesses are making modifications and complying. Of those 207, 18 have been referred up for non-compliance to the state task force or the strike team.
Tim, are we giving any citations, or have we given any citations?
We have not, no. So, that would be the state strike team, like alcohol, beverage control, and others going out that would be issuing those citations.
Okay, thank you.
And then, really, I would say that the community liaison team and the industry team has been heavily focused on training. They've provided multiple trainings to chambers on infection control measures, workplace measures, contact tracing. We've also been doing training to schools and childcare facilities and working with our chambers with the business grant to help us assist with the outreach activities to businesses, recognizing that they're best poised to be working with their respective membership, and then making sure that we're also encompassing the unincorporated areas of the county. On our operations side, I think one of the most significant pieces, and this is in part anticipation of where we're going to be going with the Unified Support Teams, but also building off of where we were already going, which is ensuring that equitable access to testing for our rural communities. We have a collection and outreach events that are beginning to roll out. We're partnering with United Healthcare Centers in the community of Allensworth for August 11th and 17th to be providing collection, and we'll schedule additional ones as needed. Early Mart is our next scheduled area, and then we're looking at identifying other communities based on epidemiological data and where we know that we have testing voids or deserts and need to make sure we're enhancing our outreach. We are developing a scope of work that'll provide financial assistance through our CARES Act, funding one of the pieces that the agency had, which was dedicated toward supporting healthcare. We're using those funds in part to expand testing. I know we had a meeting yesterday with Quiadelta to talk about expanding their mobile testing. I think they'll... They're very interested in the partnership and are putting together a proposal for us, and hopefully we'll be seeing that in the next couple weeks. And then our labs, I just wanted to, you know, take a moment to acknowledge the amazing public health lab staff. We surpassed 20,000 COVID-19 tests. I think the last time I was here, I reported that we were about seventh in the state. We actually now had been tied with Los Angeles in terms of our testing capacity and output. So, the staff, and I think we were third in the state, staff have been doing a tremendous job out there at the lab.
And Tim, what is our turnaround in our lab testing?
Our lab testing...
We're hearing weeks on some, you know...
We've continued to maintain... There have been times where they get inundated and swamped, and you might have a two-day turnaround, but they continue to stay focused on their day turnarounds on those labs, recognizing the importance of getting stuff.
And Tim, what is our turnaround in our lab testing?
Our lab testing-
We're hearing weeks on some, you know?
We've continued to maintain, there have been times where they get inundated and swamped, and you might have a two-day turnaround, but they continue to stay focused on their day turnarounds on those labs, recognizing the importance of getting stuff as quickly as possible. And our hope is, going back to the Quiadelta partnership, is Quiadelta's the only other entity in the county that has their own lab for that type of testing. So our hope is, again, leveraging locally as much as we can possibly do, recognizing that we're never going to be able to match the volume of commercial labs that have, you know, enormous infrastructure and buildings to do mass testing.
And do we know what Quiadelta's turnaround time is for results?
My understanding, I don't know this entirely, but my understanding was they were having a pretty similar turnaround time to ours. I think both of our lab and Quiadelta coordinate very well on making sure that we're prioritizing the highest need when those tests come in. So we've been trying to keep that quick turnaround, and then sending anything that was lower priority out through the commercial system.
Thank you.
Tim, and I heard, I think I heard you say that we were third in the state in testing. We actually surpassed Los Angeles?
This was for our public health lab. So each of the, not every county has a public health lab, and the ones that do, in terms of our testing output, how many we're processing.
Okay. And how about test collections in general? Across the, I mean, us compared to everybody else in the state, as far as a percentage of the population, how is our testing higher as a percentage, about the same as a percentage?
You know, that's a great question. I will, I'll research that, have staff identify kind of where we fall in terms of total tests. I don't, and usually, we'd probably want to look at it on a per capita basis to kind of factor out, you know, population and demand. So we'll, I'll see what that is. It's been a long time since I've looked at that, so I don't even have that at the tip of my brain.
And the reason I ask that question is our, because we're looking at our case rates per 100,000. So just wondering how it all compares.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. I will research that and follow up with the board.
Thanks.
Supervisor Valero?
Yes, and I don't know if you'll touch on this later on, but with regards to mobile testing, and making sure that we are also reaching out to the underserved, which is like more of the farm worker populations that may not go in to get tested, do you know the status of where we're at with our mobile testing and going out to these various communities?
Yes, so the, and that's an excellent question also. That's where our huge focus is right now. It has been, but I feel like with the additional resources coming down from the state, although we know we're getting an additional $5.7 million through the unified support teams, it's kind of nebulous still on how that's going to be spent and how that differs from some of our other programs, where what we're looking at and what we're engaging, both on our Community Care Coalition side and then our Healthcare Coalition, is kind of a comprehensive plan for addressing the farm worker population. So part of it's testing, but, you know, a huge part of it is about education, it's about resources. What we want to make sure that we're aligning then is identifying what the barriers might be, because it's one thing to say, yeah, we can get a test, we can get the results if it's positive, but then what now? And we want to make sure that we have housing in place, so that if someone's positive, similar to what we did with Project Room Key, they have a place to go. If, putting food on, you know, the table is a challenge, which I think in this, in this group is going to be a significant challenge, because some will not qualify for unemployment, we want to make sure then that we have the food resources lined up to be able to support that family unit. So there's a lot of moving parts that I feel strongly that we have some really good devoted, both internal agency staff, but through our Community Care Coalition, some of the key community providers there that are, that are looking at this problem. I would, my expectation then is particularly as we do our kickoff with the Unified Support Team, that we start to see the rollout of this to our communities over the next month or so. We've had some hiccups. I'll, you know, some of the, some of the farm labor cams that we reached out to did not want us on-site or on-premise, so we're kind of regrouping on how we want to do some of that outreach, what that looks like, and making sure that we're engaging in a way that will be well-received and the population feels supported.
Supervisor Shuckley?
Ashley, you answered my question, Tim. I was just going to say, we can go out there and do all the testing we want to, but unless we have a way to isolate those that come out positive, it's really for nothing to me.
Yeah. So that's, that's been, we were really gung-ho and ready to go with testing, and then I think there was that additional realization of, you know, what, where are the gaps? What's going to happen if we do get these positives, and we don't have adequate resources or options set up? So that's, that's what the team is actively working with the community providers on as well.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, Tim, again, a follow-up to that same line there. So I think we're getting finally to the point where we're really establishing where the vector is, where we really are looking at farm labor as being a huge vector. It's why we're seeing a disproportionate amount of the Latino community being infected as well. And I think the governor now and the state is recognizing that, and I would really like to see that those, that 5.7 million that you mentioned, and I think there was another six some odd million from private philanthropy that's going to be coming, so maybe we see a total of 6 million total that comes from that. And it seems like it would be really well-spent, and what you mentioned in not only education, but being able to tell people you are able to, to not work side-by-side with somebody while you have this sickness. I think they understand that, obviously. I think it's a matter of they don't have another choice. They don't have a Plan B, and so if there's, I think a great use of those funds would be that Plan B that you mentioned, providing those resources to them. And I think we could really see significant movement based on that. And I think in getting the word out there, we have existing organizations that are out there in the field that are trusted to be working in those populations. So if we could maybe disseminate the information through those existing organizations, it might be a great way to go. I'm sure you're already talking about it, but-
But I appreciate that, because I mean, you're absolutely right, Supervisor, of the challenge is getting those trusted community voices that are on the ground, that already know the population. It's not us, it's not Health and Human Services. It really is our community-based organizations. It's our family resource centers, it's our schools in these communities that, that are those trusted voices, and those are the groups that we want to be engaging with. And, and I appreciate the feedback too on the use of the funds, because I agree, I think, recognizing that it's not that someone isn't concerned about getting sick, it's just not having an alternative option of, I need to, I need to work, I need to put food on the table. So let's look at how we can address that and, and remove that barrier, so that we can ensure a healthy community overall.
Thank you. Supervisor Valero?
Yes, and I'd just like to echo that, given the fact that I have come across several who have called me or left me messages with regards to their positive cases. And I will say, although this is not a sample of sorts, but I do know that many do choose just to stay at home, even though I have expressed, hey, would you like to go somewhere to quarantine? But they choose not to, and instead want to be in their household. Obviously, there will be some that decide, okay, you know what, I think I want that additional resource. But going back and echoing what my colleagues have said, this is sometimes their only form of income. And so by not working in the field, that means no money is coming into their house to support their families. So I definitely think we need to really up our education, identify those social influencers in these respective communities, not only through social media, but other outlets like radio and TV. And so I think that's kind of where we need to take that approach. And, and really, that education piece is stay home. I know that many times we like to congregate, we like to be with family, extended family on weekends, after a long week's work in the fields, but now is not the time to do so. And so I think that we're just going to continue to lead in that charge, and hopefully we make roads there.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions or comments from board members? Tim, you can continue.
All right, and I'm essentially done. Just wanted to note kind of our operating cost total to date for response, $3.53 million. And then for our Project Room Key update, currently 109 individuals being served by Project Room Key. And to date, the total invoices for that program, $385,000 roughly, $385,000. And then also, one more final note, our MDT behavioral health side, we are anticipating an additional 53 inmates being released early due to pandemic. Mental health branch is working closely with probation and working with our MDTs to try and at least engage with those released inmates early, and make sure that they have, you know, housing options, et cetera, and hopefully provide, whether it's behavioral health, substance use, or other types of supportive services.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Just another quick question. Has there been a meeting with contractors, kind of factoring, kind of the food plants, the, just has there been a meeting with the owners or the business leads in that area, so that way you can get them around the table and really identify, look, these are the resources that are coming to you to support your employees? Has that been done already, maybe like with the ag commissioner and others who can really have those conversations with them?
I think there's been some of that, particularly on a more individualized basis, if it's working with a particular employer, a large employer processing facility. In terms of a more global, unified approach, I don't believe we have, and actually, I think that's a really good suggestion. Something that, with the Unified Support Team coming on site, one of our goals is looking at all of our county family partners, in addition to our business and community partners, and I, the ag commissioner certainly is one of those departments that we feel, you know, they've been very helpful and supportive through this. This would be a great opportunity to engage them more directly on our, on our response.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on that note, I know that California Citrus Mutual and California Ag Labor Association, which is, both organizations are based here in Tulare County, they've been stepping up their efforts to try and inform their membership, because it's a two-way street. I think that the employers definitely have an interest in keeping their employees healthy, recognizing that they still have essential businesses that have very strict timelines as far as being able to get the fruit and produce out, out of the fields and to the market. And so they're, they're very interested, and specifically not seeing some of the types of outbreaks that we saw earlier in the Midwest at some of the meatpacking facilities. And so not having some of those, or even in Hanford at Central Valley Meat. So I know they're very interested, and they've been stepping up their efforts to English and Spanish outreach. CALA is, their focus is mainly on, on ag labor contractors. So that's, that's a great organization to get out to multiple people, to the, to the contractors who then can educate their workforce. Outside of that, I appreciate on, in your, in your report, how you, how you stated that it's, it's not coincidental that the increase occurred in the two-week window following July 4th and the corresponding celebrations. I think that's, you know, as we look at this, we're, you know, I know it's already been emphasized, but, you know, it's gatherings outside of the workplace. And so unfortunately, when we're, what we're seeing is, is that the workplace and businesses are the ones that are being negatively impacted, based on individuals' choices outside of the workplace, probably more so than what's happening at the actual business sites, is what's happening outside of that. So I agree that the, the amount of additional information and education we can do to try and limit those type of, you know, although, you know, essential for, I think, mental health status, but it's really, you know, not necessarily essential for the sake of reducing the spread. Question about the school reopening possibility. Have you received responses from school districts? And if so, what's the general feel as far as the responses, as far as what that looks like? Is there interest, and if so, what type of schools?
So yeah, I, offhand, I believe we've had about 10 private institutions that have, have reached out and requested the waiver. That fell off last week, I think because everyone was kind of waiting for the state to release the guidance that they released last night. I would probably expect maybe the floodgates to open, and we'll, we'll get more private institutions asking. We, meaning myself, Dr. Hutt, and the Public Health Director, Karen Elliott, had met with Tim Heyer just to kind of discuss, on the public school side, what interest there was. And I think, public schools, there definitely was an interest in a number of the public schools, particularly ones that were concerned about, you know, broadband access and other factors that would limit the ability to do effective distance learning. And so they, internally, TCO was, was working to kind of coordinate and consolidate that group of, of which public institutions would be interested in submitting that. So I would expect next week, I'll have a better idea of, of the volume that we're seeing, and that's also when our team will be in, starting to engage with each of the schools.
And so the, just to reemphasize, that the primary challenges for schools reopening in Tulare County is going to be our case rate, and then the 14-day window, which we're trying to minimize that by having schools submit early possibly, so that they're ready. So basically, it's just going to be the case rate. It seems like all the other criteria for many, well, at least for the smaller schools, small school districts are probably fairly achievable. I don't know that there's, you know, it's, it's definitely going to be an additional burden for schools, but I don't, I don't see that for small schools that they're not going to be able to achieve the criteria that's listed.
Yeah, I think that the two single largest challenges beyond, obviously, that, as you've stated, the case rate, is testing capacity. A number of, of the plans or, or the guidance from the state does require regular testing of school staff, so that when you're already overburdened on testing and turnaround times are slow, that, that will be a challenge. And our hope is, as, as commercial labs catch up and more commercial labs are brought into the mix, the testing turnaround will be mitigated. And then the other limiting factor is contact investigation and, and tracing. And our, our hope and expectation would be schools, schools typically are most poised to be doing a lot of the initial investigation, because they know based on their role, which students were there that day, which class they were in, all of that information that our contact investigators would be looking at. So a, a strong partnership with each of the schools on how they're maintaining their records, how they're doing the investigations, would, would be helpful, given our limited capacity on contact tracers.
Thank you, appreciate that. And then, just the last thing, I just encourage you on the youth activities, just to include us with that, when those communications come out, that's, I think that's going to be an important alternative for, for our youth, given the fact that it doesn't look like schools will be opening in the near future.
Okay.
Supervisor Valero?
I just wanted to quickly echo something that my colleague just said, and I wholeheartedly agree that essential business still needs to happen, and that we still need to have our businesses running. But we also need our essential workers to be there to provide that work. And so I think that it is imperative that, that the CIO, as well as HHSA, and the ag commission- commissioner work together in tandem with these additional monies that are coming from the state. And I think that the ag commissioner has been doing a great job already with providing masks and, and informing people. I just think that these additional funds really need to be at the heart and the crux of what we need to do here moving forward with our farmers and farmworking community.
I, I would just comment, I agree. And I also would like to acknowledge that the sheriff on their expanded campaign with handing masks out in our communities, I think that's been a huge success on, on the sheriff's side. And I, what we committed to is continuing to support the sheriff's office however they might need for masks or other types of, of resources. And we're trying to work with them in tandem when they're going out to also pop up our events for outreach and engagement. My hope really is that is it's that synchronized cohesive effort of not only the county resources and government, but then also our, our nonprofits and our community influencers.
Thank you. Anything further from board members? Last thing I'll just mention, Tim, before you step off the stage is thank you to your staff. This continues on and on and being able to have the testing capacity and the results that we've seen within your shop and the public health team has been tremendous. I know that they're continually putting forward extra effort, extra hours. And I just want you to continue to do what you can to help keep their spirits up. I know that you have undertaken innovative efforts within your shop, encouraging videos that your public health director put together for her staff. But anything that you can do to just keep the morale up within the department, I think is very valuable. So please do send our words of encouragement and support. And I hope that we'll continue this hard work and make it through this to the other side. Thanks, Tim. All right, next item on the agenda today is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any phone comment at this time?
Mr. Chair, we do not have any comments.
Okay, are there any public comments from anyone here in attendance at the board meeting today? Okay, please come forward, state your name and address. For the record, your comment period will be limited to three minutes.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Lutz, his department, on their efforts of supporting and assisting the community during this trying times. Good morning, Chairman Banderpoole, board members, staff, and the audience. I am Vincent Salinas, Chairman of the Latino Political Action Committee of Tulare County. Since nineteen sixty-four, secondhand smoke has killed over two and a half million people. Minnesota became the first state in the nation to pass a no-smoking law in nineteen seventy-five. Twenty years later, in nineteen ninety-five, the state of California passed a no-smoking law also. After many years of lawsuits by individuals and states against the tobacco industry, they, they finally reached a settlement in nineteen ninety-eight. In the April of two thousand and one, the county of Tulare received two point five million dollars as part of the settlement for the state of California. On March fourth, twenty twenty, the executive department of the state of California issued an executive order N thirty, N dash thirty-three dash twenty proclaiming a state of emergency exist in California because of the coronavirus threat. On March nineteenth, twenty twenty, by the order of the state public health officer to protect, to protect the public health, ordered all individuals living in the state of California to stay home or shelter in place. On May seventh, twenty twenty, the order of the state public officer released the stages of reopening businesses in the community. At the Board of Supervisors meeting of May nineteenth, twenty twenty, the Tulare County Board of Supervisors voted on a motion by Supervisor Townsend, and in his words, "We send, repeal the public health order or override the public health order." To this date, it has not been on the county's agenda to revoke the vote taken on that day. It has been stated nationally and by the state of California to wear masks, keep six feet of social distance, and wash your hands. On June eighteen, twenty twenty, the governor of California made it mandatory of wearing ma, face masks by all in public. Are the board of supervisors going to protect the safety of over four hundred and sixty thousand people of the county as to their public health? Or do more people have to die like secondhand smoke from the coronavirus? The state is mandating the wearing of masks, and only one city in, in the county has instituted this, the California Department of Health mandating the mask be worn outside the home. Board of Supervisors, mandate the wearing masks for the county so it's clear throughout the county that mask is mandatory? Or will families of those who died after May nineteen, twenty twenty, have to sue also? Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. Are there additional public comments this morning, Madam Clerk, on the phone? I believe that was only, the only public comment here in the building today. At this time, I will close the public comment period. And we will, before we take up our timed items, take up the consent calendar. And then following the consent calendar, we will take a brief recess. Members of the board, are there any items of the consent calendar which include items ten through thirty-two that you need to pull or want to make comment on or have corrected? I do know that item thirty-one will be pulled and will return at a later date. Anything in addition to that? Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got, I don't know if we want to pull them or not, but I have questions regarding twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. If, I, I recognize that the engineers' estimates are quite a bit higher than the bids coming in. So is there a plan for the savings? And if so, what, what does that look like?
Okay, right before we vote on that, I'll have Reed come forward right now.
Thank you, Reed Chanki with the Resource Management Agency. Items twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight are informational items for the bid openings. And absolutely right, the bids came in quite a bit lower than what we had initially estimated. We do tend to be a little bit conservative. We try to be about five percent over the median bid price. But here, due to the combination of oil prices being significantly lower than when we initially programmed the project and just the general bidding environment of number of projects on the street, we got lucky and we got very good bids. In respect to the, your particular question, what do we do with the excess funding? The first, it's kind of a it depends question based on the funding source. If the state and federal funds pay for the project and that's it. So there, if they're coming low, then we don't get the excess. If they come in high, then they generally do cover the excess. So that would be the state and federal funding projects, particularly the early March sidewalk project here. For the other two projects, they're funded through a combination of measure R funds or road fund balance. So within strict limitations that were allowed through public contract code, we can expand the scope of the project a little bit, and so we try to do that where it makes sense. So these are road rehab projects, expanded a little bit further, so get as much as we can at these prices. The remaining funds fall back into either our measure R fund balance or our road fund balance. And so they just take over into the next project. And typically, we try to overprogram the projects a little bit, so we're using a bit more of the road fund balance. So this kind of just reduces that amount that is, these projects are dependent on that fund balance and allows us to push it into the next work. So all in all, it's very good news. It allows us to do more work and keep the projects moving.
So it sounds like there may be a little bit of expanded projects initially, but most of the, the benefit will happen next fiscal year or next year as far as with additional projects. It won't be this year.
Correct. So to bring additional projects forward, you'd have to go through the design process and everything else there. So it probably will be next year when we would see, you know, we're looking at roughly, it's a million and a half there and another half a million there. So it's almost two million worth of additional projects.
Right. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, public comment? All right, seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion on the items on the consent calendar, less item thirty-one. Have a motion by Supervisor Struckley and a second by Supervisor Valero. Please vote. Motion passes five-oh unanimous. We will take a brief, three-and-a-half-minute recess and reconvene at ten forty-three and thirty seconds. All right, the time is now, at ten forty-three and thirty seconds. We are going to reconvene the board meeting and take up our earlier items on our agenda, the nine-thirty timed items. They are public hearings. At this time, I will open the public hearing, take up item six, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to consider the placement of delinquent water and sewer service fees, delinquent penalties, and auditors' collection charges for county service areas, number one. And number two, on the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one tax roll, we will direct the tax collector to place the delinquent sewer and water service fees, delinquent penalties, and the auditors' collection charges of county service areas, number one, to customers on the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one tax roll, if still delinquent after August fourth, twenty twenty. And now the entire agenda item has been read, so no presentation. Right, Sherman, I'll turn it over to you.
Service fees to cover the maintenance and operations for those systems. And on an annual basis, there's a percentage of customers that don't pay their bills. And based on our county ordinance twenty-nine, twenty-four, we're allowed to assess a penalty and place those delinquent fees on the tax roll. Terabella Sewer Maintenance District is also administered by Tulare County. Same process here, different ordinance, number three, allows the board of supervisors to assess that penalty and place the delinquent fees on the tax roll. And then the Civil Water Company is, this will be the last year, I believe, that we represent Civil Water Company in this capacity. It's under receivership, also has the same process as described before. The timeline, April thirtieth, we send out a notice to service members, letting them know of any delinquent balances at that time to give them plenty of time to correct those deficiencies. May thirty-first is our second notice, and then on the twenty-fifth of June, we send a third notice. After that, it's published three times consecutively in a newspaper, this time the Sun Gazette. And then today, here we are, August fourth, conducting the public hearing. And the payment deadline, just usually there's a few days after the public hearing, just the way things fell with board meetings. It's going to be today at the end of the day. And then our delinquent customer list to be placed on the tax roll is due on August tenth. So some graphics here to give you an idea of the number of people that are delinquent. The percentages on the right, I would say, are actually, they're definitely, they're more on average. Last year was slightly higher year of delinquency. This year is kind of back to normal, which I would say is a victory considering the environment that we're working in. And so on average, eight point six percent of service, service members are, are delinquent on their payments. For a total of sixty-six thousand, this is at the time that I produced the PowerPoint. Since then, about seventy-five hundred dollars additional bills have been paid off. And this is a graphic of what I was referencing. You can see here in eighteen, fifty-seven thousand, we're looking at about fifty-eight thousand this year that we would place on the tax roll. Last year was somewhat of a higher year. So considering the pandemic and its effects, it seems like we're not experiencing any significant change in our, our payment, payments. So in addition to their delinquent amounts, there's a two hundred dollar fee that covers the entire zone. So that's split amongst all the taxpayers in that zone. There is a dollar fee per parcel and then a ten percent penalty. So with that, the first request would be approval of the CSA number one and two to place the, any delinquent amounts on the tax roll, if still delinquent after today at four thirty. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, are there any questions from board members regarding items six, seven, and eight? That presentation was for all of those. Are there any public comments here at the board meeting, the board chambers? Any public comments on the phone, Madam Clerk? Okay, there are no public comments. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Struckley and a second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes five-oh unanimous. That was a very convincing presentation, Mr. Sherman Dix. Thank you very much. Appreciate it and hope you have a great rest of the day.
Thank you.
We will now move on and take up item number nine, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I, I believe we have to open, because the Terabella is a separate entity.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. We do have to reconvene, we have to adjourn as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District. We will take up item eight and have a separate presentation, public hearing, and action for that item. Public hearing open.
So, any questions on Terabella Sewer Maintenance District? I could go through the slides again if you'd like, but.
We had to, I, my apologies for not catching.
No, I apologize for the presentation being so dull that.
Any questions or comments from board members? Members of the public, public comment? Anything on the phone, Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay, seeing nothing, no public comment. We will bring it back to the board supervisors, close the public hearing, and entertain a motion. We have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, a second by Supervisor Struckley. Please vote. Motion passes five-oh unanimous.
Thank you very much.
And we will now adjourn as the Terabella Sewer Maintenance District and reconvene as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Take up item nine, which is also a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this time and take up a request from the Resource Management Agency to continue the public hearing from July twenty-first, twenty twenty to adopt the planning commission's findings and recommendation to approve the development agreement number DEV twenty-dash-zero-zero-one to quitclaim three unimproved pieces of real property measuring five thousand six hundred thirty-two square feet, two hundred and forty-eight point six square feet, and fifteen thousand two hundred eighty-eight point six square feet. And I will let you read the rest.
Thank you.
Chairman Banderpoole? Supervisors, CIO, council, I am Aaron Bach, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. And before you today is a development agreement and tentative map. So I did want to give you some background on this project and why we are here before you today. Omni Development Group, and we really do appreciate their patience as we've gone through this process, is, is here today to respond to any comments, but I just wanted to. But I just wanted to say, I do appreciate their patience as we've gone through this process. The project site is located at 6670 Betty Drive. There's two APNs involved currently. One's 10 acres and the other one's 4.33 acres in the unincorporated community of Goshen. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing and did recommend approval of this project by resolution. The tentative map itself is for eight parcels, eight commercial parcels. And the development agreement is a grant of land to the developer in exchange to mitigate impacts through constructing and making contributions towards the cost of public improvements. And I'll go into detail regarding that. So here's the vicinity map showing that the project is located off of Highway 99 in the community of Goshen. I also wanted to go over some detail of the projects that are occurring to give a little bit more of a basis why we're here today. Going from west to east, I'll start with SME Homes. That was approved earlier this year, 400 homes on the west side of the community. To the north of that, north of Betty Drive itself is Embry Group, who's moving forward with potential flyers. They've had a few interested offers out there. So you can see on the west side, we're going to have quite a few trips generated in pretty short order here. On the other side, and not to mention, good old SME Homes is saying they got brand-new homes and they're advertising already. So they're at the final map stage and they're going to move forward pretty fast. Embry's already at the grading permit stage and they've done a parcel map. So those projects are going to move. Across the freeway, we have the Valley Travel Plaza, Tandy's Projects. They've been working through the process probably for about four years now. And they're finally at the point of pouring asphalt. So automatically off the bat, you're going to have a Chevron, Subway, Pizza, Starbucks, and a potential Burger King here. Across the freeway, and this is where we started to get a little concerned, is when Western Milling came in with the CNG project. They're going to put all their fleet into CNG and they're going to operate out of here. And initially, they did talk about becoming private as far as serving the public. But the, so far, they haven't moved back to that proposition. But if they were to also serve the public from that facility, we'd start to see a lot of traffic occurring at that intersection. And today before you is Omni's project with an ARCO. So, and a potential hotel and quite a other, quite a large amount of other facilities. So we're beginning to see the potential for traffic. And Betty Drive was just improved. So we didn't want to lower the level of service in immediate frame time, timeframe. So the, as you can see from this graphic here, the other issue is that two of the pieces of property on this project are easements and/or owned-in-fee by the county. So this was an opportunity to exchange some improvements for these two pieces of lands. And you can see in the graphics, both nutmeg and the graphic on the lower portion of the page between all that fencing is the nutmeg piece of property. And then on the, on the top of the screen is the other 15-acre piece of property we're looking to exchange. The rights that are going to be vested or bestowed upon the developer through this agreement include the right to build the ARCO, to have future commercial, retail restaurants, a hotel, and truck repair wash center, and other truck parking, truck-related commercial. So it's quite a bit of development that's going to occur on that site. That would be allowed by right regardless, just under, and I'll talk a little bit about the zoning and the general plan. But this would be allowed by right, but what this does is vest that right forever. So the project itself is located in the Goshen urban development boundary. Figure four of the 2018 update designates a project site as highway commercial. The subject site is Zone C2MU, which allows all intended uses, including a commercial truck stop with a convenience store, restaurants, and a hotel. So these things are generally by right. The developer, in order to mitigate the impacts of the project, will receive a vested right to develop both the nutmeg and the elder piece, the 15,000 acres, totaling a little bit less than 20,000 square feet. So that in and of itself would make it de minimis typically for general service land exchanges. It wouldn't have to go through necessarily a formal process, but the development agreement goes around that process anyway because there is quid pro quo, so to say, with the actual mitigations. So in exchange for that property, the developer is offering to build a right-turn pocket, including moving the existing signal. As far as free flow of traffic, it's not so much the segment itself that immediately is impacted. It's your intersections. And the volumes on these intersections, just roughly projecting, would go to level of service D probably within the next few years if we didn't do anything. And the easiest way to do that is to create right-turn pockets. So we're asked the developers to build those. They are offering to build an onsite detention basin to county standards for our use if we need it. Mostly they'll be for their own internal uses. And contributing a one-third portion of the dual-left turn pockets, and I'll get to a graphic of that here shortly, approximately 140,000. As Reed said earlier, our estimates tend to be a little conservative. But when we finally get to the agreements themselves to build these out through the final mapping process, we'll have a real, we'll have the real hard construction numbers at that time. But that is the offer on the table today. And that is subject to a reimbursement agreement. So the developer could get reimbursed by any of the purchasers of these parcels in the future. Here's a graphic of the elder piece on the, and this is turned a little bit backwards here. But the elder piece on the top, it shows the 15,000-plus or minus acres. And the nutmegs on the lower side of this graphic, like I said, in total, they're de minimis for most of our standards regarding property exchanges. Here's a graphic of the, earlier graphic of showing the left-turn pockets. Currently, there is one left-turn pocket there. We'd make two lanes going into 67 from Betty Drive. And you can also see in the graphic the creation of the right-turn pocket for acceleration, in the acceleration lane, so that we could keep the free flow of traffic in front of this project area. We are also suggesting to the other two developers on each of the other two corners, with Tandy and with Western Milling, that they do the same. They're a little bit tougher to do because we don't have an entitlement in front of them. So this is the tentative map itself. As stated, it's a commercial tentative parcel map, so it doesn't, it's not a subdivision map. And you can see the breakdown in the acreages on all the parcels there. And that fits their business needs. And with any plan, we want to create as much flexibility for the developer as they move through the process. So the site plan might differ a little bit in the future. But the final map will lock, lock those uses in place. So I did want to say that there's quite a bit of development going on right now in Goshen. And from what we're hearing, there's more to come. So we wanted to get out and before this, the level of service degrades at this intersection, because we do not have impact fees, because we do not have necessarily sequo nexus, the developers are being very nice and they understand that if we were to do this ourselves, the county might take a little, little bit longer to fix the intersection. So again, we do appreciate Omni's help here and all the other developers in the area. But you can see from this map where those golden stars are, there's our three more projects coming down the pipe here. And those could be fairly large projects. And so we did want to move forward with this project as quickly as possible. I did want to thank Public Works. You can see there's quite a few exhibits here. There's a lot of, we did land swaps with Caltrans as we've been going through this process. And it's been quite an effort over the last two years just to get this agreement in place. And I do want to thank County Council and the Clerk for making sure we did it right, so.
All right, are there any questions from board members? This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Sam Rosaba, 935 Mae Cardon, Vice City of California. I'm the President of Omni Land Development Group. And I first want to thank Aaron, County staff, for the last year planning this. It's been, been long and tough, but we're here and we're ready to go. And I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have for us today.
Any questions or comments for the developer? Mr. Townsend, go ahead.
Not really a question, just a comment and really for, for the county and for you that I know it's been going on for a long time. And there's been a lot in there after the development of the highway there. And just it's an exciting thing to see. And it's great how everybody's been working together with the county and being, the county being very open to this development and encouraging of the development. Thank you for stepping in and seeing the potential of that area. So very supportive of this whole project. And just want to say congratulations on all that collaboration.
Awesome, thank you. We appreciate it.
All right, I have a request from Supervisor Shuckley.
Yeah, I too want to especially thank you for the delay of the last two weeks. I know it's, it's been a long time coming. I think it's a great project. There really is no robust highway commercial from, what, Cartmill maybe? You know, to Tulare up until Goshen. So I think this will be, you know, with all that's going on there, with all the projects, a much-needed area. So thank you for this.
All right, Supervisor Valero.
Oh, it got stuck. Yes, I also want to thank the people who continue to choose to invest in the community of Goshen. This is something that Graciela wanted to see as well within her respective community, to see that Goshen is a place that people can come to and appreciate and love, and not as just a pass-by. And I think this will be the first stop once you come into Tulare from the north. And so it's an opportunity to continue to grow Tulare County with the wonderful businesses and development that is happening in the heart of the Central Valley and specifically for the community of Goshen. Thank you.
I just want to remind you, Supervisor, that you also represent Traver. So don't forget to neglect them either, you know, because they also are relevant as you come into Tulare County from the north. I just want to point that out. I want to remind you. I know you're still new on the board, but make sure you remember that. Supervisor Crocker? Okay, there you go. You clarified.
I just thank you for making this investment and echo my colleagues' sentiments and their staff as well. This is, this is really, I think, you know, the, you know, I wish Dave was here. Maybe Dave's listening. But I mean, this is the whole idea of the general plan and the community plan as far as getting more development into our unincorporated communities, you know, recognizing that the 99 corridor is the best place to get that type of investment in a, you know, in a quicker fashion, recognizing that the others, there's a few more challenges elsewhere. And so this is, it's really exciting. I mean, not only this project, but all the projects and the additional projects. It's, it's great to be able to see investment. And it's a little bit of hope when we've got to deal with all the other mess that's going around that, you know, this is, this is a good thing that we get to celebrate today. So thanks.
Absolutely, thank you.
So just a few comments. Thank you for the presentation and also thank you for pushing this project forward. I know that in early mart, when we had the White River Plaza development, the entrance related to Tulare County from the south, that that was very much celebrated. And this, on the northern part of the county, is really just great. And it does represent the county's first opportunity to have a Starbucks in the unincorporated area. So definitely a significant achievement there. And I do think that this type of development is the result of planning and community outreach efforts that have helped to push proper zoning and development and growth in responsible ways. And I think that this project is just that. I've driven by the project recently and it looks great. Can't wait to have everything be open and ready to, ready fully for business. So thank you for your patience and effort to collaborate with RMA to get to this point.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Much appreciated. Okay, any additional public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, no public comments. If not, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the board for action.
I would move approval.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Shuckley and a second by Supervisor Valero. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0 unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move on and take up our untimed portion of today's agenda. Take up item 33 at this point. Members may make a referral to staff to have a matter of business considered for a future agenda. Are there any such requests at today's meeting? Okay, seeing none, I will look to my left. Counsel, do we have need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Items A through D are off calendar. The remainder of the items will be heard, and I do expect one announcement out.
Okay, thank you for attending for today's board meeting. Stay safe and healthy. Meeting adjourned to closed session.
This is Deanne Peterson, County Counsel, reporting out on item E. The Board of Supervisors directed legal counsel to defend in the case of Wonderful Citrus, the Second LLC versus the County of Tulare and Tulare County Resource Management Agency, Tulare County Superior Court Case BCU 283508. The adverse party is Wonderful Citrus, the Second LLC, and the Wonderful Company. This case involves challenge under SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, to the county's issuance of building permits for the construction of new silos at the Arrow Pistachios Processing Plant in Terabella. The roll call vote was on the motion of District Five Supervisor Dennis Townsend, seconded by District One Supervisor Kyler Crocker. It was a 5-0 vote. This concludes the reporting out for today.